I'm going to call the meeting for order at six thirty. Reminder to everyone here, the meeting is being digitally recorded, so please be respectful of each other in listening and in what you are saying. Is there anyone here for open session? Ed?
Ed Blanchard, twenty-three East Comet Pond. I just wanted to wish the board Merry Christmas, and thank you for serving and managing the town for another year.
Oh, thank you for that.
Thank you.
Also, I am here to, for the ARPA funding, and see if there's a possibility of a Christmas miracle for the Cemetery Commission, and getting some funding for their well-needed fences. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that. Can't promise you a miracle, but...
Never know.
Although we had one already, we can now hear each other, so. Katie, any announcements?
Yeah, we had a whole bunch of fun stuff the last couple of weeks. Santa has made appearances all over the place, starting out with the Brunch with Santa that I hosted at the Hubbardson Center School on the tenth, from ten to noon, and I do want to say a huge shout-out to the people that helped me with that one, that would be Paul Sweeney, and Rhonda Fox McAllister, and Jen LaBrousse, along with Giacomo's for donating the food for that. There was lots of families that came out and had a lovely time with Santa, and they all had pictures taken, and it was a good morning for a lot of the residents. That same day, there was also, Santa made another appearance going around on the Hubbardson Fire Department truck, doing the rounds, delivering some toys on the fire truck, so that was an all-day thing. And then there was also the brass concert over at the church across the street, which, from what everybody said, I didn't make it to that, but from what everybody said, it went very well, and it was very nice and lovely over there. So that's a plus. There was also, again, Santa made his appearance, thank you, Mr. Sweeney, for the Lions on the seventeenth at the rec field, and the people that I, that said that they went, said it was very nice, and it was a, it was a good day, especially for like the older kids, because that's more like, it's easier for the families with older kids to do that kind of stuff, so it was definitely a good chance for some people to get out and get some more photos. We do have the winners from the light fight. I can announce that today. I did put it out there on the social medias and on the town website, just in case you don't catch any of it. And the houses are still lit, so, you know, because it's before Christmas, so you can still go check them out. But the winners of the traditional and classic were, first place was thirty-six Jordi Lane, second was sixty-eight New Westminster Road, and third place was thirty-eight Chippewa. And for the Go Bigger Stay Home, first place went to forty-seven New Templeton, thirty-eight Main Street, the Fire Department, was second, and third place was thirty-one Venus Road. And Plainview won for the brightest business award. So that's good, I'll be going around picking up signs and delivering everybody's prizes very shortly. And the last thing that we got out there is I did touch base with all the businesses, and frozen assets is in place, so that's definitely for the month of February, that's the next one, excuse me, January coming up, to go into the businesses in the toughest time of the year, and make yourself comfy, and maybe get a cup of coffee, or a piece of pizza, a pizza or a sub or something, and sit down and fill out some applications. The application forms are at the diner, at Giacomo's, at the Country Trail, and the Pizza Palace right now. And you can go help them on their roughest month of the year, and give them some business. So those are there, and that's pretty much all I got for right now. And Merry Christmas to everyone in Hubbardson. Oh, CHOP's still taking, CHOP, COP, not CHOP, it's, they lost the H. COP is still taking donations till tomorrow, correct? Yes, so tomorrow. So any monetary donations or toy donations, please drop off at the Police Department. They're closing up their donations tomorrow, so get those dropped off.
Can I add to that?
Yes.
January sixth, Meat Raffle. Lions Meat Raffle at the club.
Okay, January sixth.
Yep.
Meat Raffle for the Lions.
Yep.
We will write that down, so I'll talk about it next time, too. All right, what time is it?
Six thirty, I believe.
Six thirty, and that's at the?
Rod and Gun.
The Rod and Gun. All right. Okay, so January sixth, everybody get their meat raffle on.
Thank you very much. Okay, we have a consent agenda to take a motion on. I will let everybody know. On the minutes that are on the consent agenda, we were all present for that, those meetings. On the appointments, there's no waiver or anything like that involved, so it's just strictly okaying these appointments. And on the licensure, this is John's wife that is applying for the triple A's.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman. If you know, on there, it still states that the executive session minutes will be approved as part of the consent agenda. If we could please remove those as they are a portion of the executive session to be held after the meeting?
Okay.
Well, before adjournment, but after the public session of the meeting?
Okay. So that would be the December sixth one.
Yes.
So I'd like to make a motion to accept everything on the consent agenda, except for the approval of the minutes from December sixth executive session.
Motion's made.
Can I get some, can I get some, what is a triple A today? Class-two motor vehicle license licensure?
Can you second the motion first? Because I'm going to have the discussion on this before we vote. Because I can't second it. Anyone else can second it?
I can second it.
Okay, motion's made and seconded. Now, if you have any, anyone has questions? Chris has a question about the triple A, class-two motor vehicle license.
It's a license to sell used vehicles, it was in the, it was in the packet. It's, I want to review it real quick.
Oh. Peter and Heather, you okay with the agenda as presented?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Okay. Seeing that there's no more discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you, motion passed. And the new business. Excuse me. Updating the 2020 Select Board Liaison List, before we start going through it, we have copies that were prepared for us. There are four places I would like to put my name before we go through this. Two I'm doing already, but in places where Dan, my six previous chair, was a representative, I would like to step in and do those. So I'm putting myself in on the council and the agent, which I'm do, I've always done. I would now like to do the planning board and the Police Department. And Dan and I both did the school department together, so I want to stay on that.
Mr. Chairman, if you give me one second, I will bring it up on the screen so that we can all just go through it together, and everyone can, then we can be done.
Yeah, I don't know if Heather and Peter have their, a copy at home.
So I'm going to bring it up on the screen.
You're only on, you're only on one. So you're volunteering for these other, these other?
These are the ones I want, I would like to do, yeah. Yeah. Because we're doing this bringing out date benefit mainly for Peter, because he's the newest member of the board.
All right, so let's.
Oh, you erased them all. I was fine with all the ones I had.
I've got an old copy, if you, if you don't remember.
Yeah, well, I know, I remember which ones I had. The first two were mine.
Yes. But.
I have a, I have a question. I wonder if, Mr. Chairman, can I ask a quick question?
Go ahead.
So I know we talked about this a little bit last year, but I always like to bring this up, just to make sure we're on the same page. So before we start talking about who's responsible to which, which board committee, commission, position, what have you on this, I guess my question is if we can just talk a few minutes about what is our purpose? What are we trying to accomplish with these liaison positions, seeing as we have a strong town administrator with a charter? I just want to make sure you understand what my role is, and what everyone else's role is, and that we're all doing the same thing.
You want to touch upon that? Because you've just brought it up before.
I, I can, yeah. So originally, the liaison list is first and foremost to have these boards and committees, if there's an issue, depending on what they are, the prospective person is their contact for the select board. So that's the first and foremost. So whoever's name goes along with, so like if animal control had an issue, they could reach out to me to be their select board person, a point of contact, to bring things forth to the select board. The other thing is that I brought up a few years ago was to try to sit in on, especially if there's meetings, because like some things don't have meetings, like animal control officer, they don't have meetings, but I sit on other spots, like the CIPC, and I try as the best I can, when they have meetings, to sit in on the meetings, or definitely make sure I go back and watch to see what's going on. So that way, Dan used to bring up at the end of our meetings, any board and committee updates or anything like that. And we would sometimes talk about if there was stuff going on with our different boards or committees, and we could tell everybody else on the select board, anyone else in town that's listening, what's going on, and like things that are working in the pipeline, what committees are working on what, and everything like that. Also, so certain boards and committees aren't doing the same kind of work, and not reinventing the wheel. So it's kind of a three-point system for why we have a name for each.
I could jump in too, also, I, over the years, the way I've used it, the ones that I was on, similar to what Katie was explaining, but I would occasionally just pop in on them. For example, I've always been on the council of the agent, because when I ran for office, it was one of the things that I stood for, because I'm one of the senior citizens. So I stop in to see Claudia occasionally, just to see how things are going, and if she has any questions. And she has contacted me at times. Dan and I would go to the school committee meetings. So it's things of this nature, just to let some of the various people or the departments know that they've got one direct source to the board that they can talk to, and that's the way I've always looked at it.
On top of the town administrator?
Yes.
And, and an extra layer? Just to add, to keep the select board involved, and kind of split it up fairly?
Absolutely, yes. Is that okay, Heather?
Yeah, that, that makes sense, Jeff and Katie. I guess my only thing is, you know, in looking at this in the past, you know, if we're going to split it up, I think it should be split up fairly, so everyone can, you know, kind of shares the load, and maybe also, my, my suggestion, Katie, you're going to hate this one, but maybe we rotate around some of the ones that people have had for a long time, so everyone kind of, over the course of their three years on the board, kind of gets to dabble or interconnect with the departments as a liaison at some point. So everyone can know all the board members, all the board members can know everybody else. And maybe my other suggestion would perhaps be, because as fun as this sounds like something to dive through in the middle of a meeting, and spend an hour and a half to go through, is it possible that we could send, you know, everyone could pick, you know, however many are there, divided by five, the right number, send it, you know, our first, you know, maybe like ten choices over to Jeff and me, and have them kind of take a stab at it, and kind of pick up preliminary assignments for everybody, so that we're not spending the next hour to go through this?
I agree with you wholeheartedly, and I think in cases where it would be sort of an overlap, it would be at the liberty of the chairman to suggest who moves forward. So that sounds like a duty that would be that of the chair, so. Yeah, if the board wants to do that, we can set up an email. I can send out an email tomorrow explaining it, and then we can move forward in that way, instead of sitting here and having my computer die again, like it did last time.
You need a longer cord.
Not touching any cords.
Nothing, okay.
Need, opinion of any other board members on that? Because I'm amenable to anything that you want to do.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Peter.
I don't see, is this just in-town committees? Or I don't see the Rutler Regional Dispatch on it, or did I miss it?
That's separate.
It is, okay, thank you.
Yeah, you're, you're still on that, that's separate.
Okay. That's all I needed to know, thank you, Jeff.
Anything else, Heather?
Nope, that's all I had, Jeff.
Do you have any feelings that she's suggesting?
I, I'm fine if it wants to go to an email, rather than I'll sit here and screw around with this right now. I'm fine with that.
Okay, you're okay with that, Chris?
Yes.
All right, then that's what we'll do. You guys will just, when you get a chance, send me what you would like, you're interested in, and I'll take a look at it. Okay?
Yes.
Okay. Moving on, to your new business. B, Chapter one eighty, response letter to the Cannabis Control Commission. Nate, if you would.
So upon request by the, by the MMA, the Massachusetts Municipal Association, I took to drafting with some of their guidance, actually a lot of their guidance, a letter to the Cannabis Control Commission on behalf of the select board and the town, noting that we are at liberty to lose a good amount of cannabis money that we have contracted over the years based on these new legislative enhancements that they have done in the legislature this year. And it had passed in the legislature, and it has now been given to the Cannabis Control Commission to review and to come out with guidance. One of my main points in that letter is that we, A, have these contracts dead to rights. They were signed and agreed to in 2020, have yet to receive a single penny, even though some of these companies have begun the sale and cultivation of their goods. And three, would like them to create a tiered system. One, where it's a tier for the companies that did agree to a, an agreement, maybe not at three percent, if they figure out what is fair and just and actually applicable to our community, but it shouldn't be that, like they are grandfathered in, in the same as someone who may start a cannabis business in five years, under these new laws. It was a different perception, and it was a different time. So if you reviewed the letter that was in the packet, that's the letter that I was proposing, that you authorized me to send on the board's behalf.
Anyone have any comments?
No.
Nope.
No, I personally thought, I thought the letter was excellent, and I, I've talked to you personally about this already. I have strong feelings about this, because I would be very, very upset if the delay process allows them to, in a sense, exist, and we never saw a dime. Which is the way things are beginning to look, because it's always been one delay after another. So I absolutely am behind that totally, and you would need a motion from us to tell you to go forward by sending. So if we could get a motion to tell Nate to send that letter in, I would appreciate it.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to have our town administrator send in the letter that was proposed to the CCC on behalf of the select board and the town.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? Peter, anything?
No, I'm good.
Okay. All right, all in favor? Yes, yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Can I just ask a question, as to who in town is responsible? What, who in town is accountable for holding these cannabis companies responsible for what they owe the town?
Well, we have the host agreement that was signed by us and them when they first came before us, and that's, it's a contract.
Right, but I'm saying, who's holding them accountable to get their records of sales, so that we can get payment?
So they didn't do any actual cultivation until, let's call it, July. So the first time that that conversation ever even occurred, they had known about the legislation. So they told my predecessor that they were going to wait until the legislation played out, to determine what they were going to pay us. And now this is happening to municipalities all over the Commonwealth. And I followed up with a second email, and got a response from one of the companies telling me the same thing, that they're looking forward to working with me, but they were going to hold off on payment until such time as there was guidance on what they legally have to do. So that's where things like this letter come, come in. We could potentially hire a company to go and try to receive the money, but that would be additional funding, and it may be wrong at the end of it. Like, there is a chance that the triple C could come out and say, all those old host community agreements are out the window, and this is how we're doing it now. And that would be a direct hit to things like public safety professionals.
Until that new legislation goes forward, they're in breach of contract.
Technically.
I'll go grass and back it up. Essentially. The hell, they don't have any.
They are in good company in their breach, but, yes, you are not incorrect, sir.
So who, who will follow through on that in the future?
I'm going to keep following up with the triple C. Like, they, every community in the state that has marijuana companies is pushing for an answer on this, because it's holding a lot of communities up in the same, same, same exact way.
We need that money.
We just happen to be one of the communities that it timed itself inappropriately. Like, of course, the time which they were finally going to come around having some of the HCA funds due, is when this legislation went through.
Answer your questions.
Thank you.
Okay.
If you have any further questions, I'd be free to talk to you about it at any time.
Okay.
Thank you, thanks, Ed, thank you, Nate. Okay, we're moving to all business. The process for police chief selection, discussion?
Mr. Chairman, you missed item C.
Oh, I'm sorry, I did, I beg. On my copy, I don't have a second. Yes. Yeah, my apologies. The open meeting law complaint filed by Jill Mann on December nineteenth, two thousand twenty-two, if you want, Nate.
So on December nineteenth, Ms. Jill Mann, who has been dealing with the community in a variety of ways over the past four to five months, reached out to us to indicate that she was filing complaint with the Open Meeting Law Division of the Attorney General's Office, stating that when the board met an executive session to review the interim police chief's contract on November twenty-first, prior to me being the town administrator, we did not place at the end the reasoning for meeting. It was supposed to just say something real brief, along the lines of renegotiation of contract with interim police chief, or something like that. With that being said, our legal counsel, Attorney Murray, has drafted a letter stating to Ms. Mann that we understand her complaint, but it is not substantiated, because A, she never turned it into the town clerk, which is the legal way of filing a complaint. Instead, she sent it directly to me. B, all of the other variety of things that she met, mentioned, such as things involving potential investigations or our law enforcement divisions, are also not under the guise of the open meeting law. So the letter that I provided to all of you today does point out a variety of those things. And if so, I would like to have you authorize the sending of that letter. We will send it to the open meeting law, to Ms. Mann. In this case, we'll be closed for the time being. It, in this certain matter, it does not seem like there would be another avenue to bring this same thing up. That does not mean that there could not be another complaint for another issue on another day, but for this day, we would be all set.
All right, I'd like to make a motion for our town administrator to send to all pertinent parties this letter that was drafted up.
By KP Law.
By KP Law. In regards to the open complaint filed by Jill Mann.
Second.
Motion made, seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Yes?
Yes.
Opposed? Motion carried. Now we move to all business. Process for the chief, police chief selection, discussion regarding different options for the police chief hiring process. Before we get into this, from the point of view of the board, I would like to say that two weeks ago, we had, we had discussed this, and the board was divided right in half, and we put, put this off for a couple of weeks. So that the discussion tonight, we can limit it, because we do have other things we need to take care of. I would recommend that we limit the discussion to, for each member of the board, should they want to have anything to say about it, to a five-minute period or less, and not a second time round unless, until everyone's had a chance for their first. But after that, we would end the discussion and put forth a motion, and go from there. That would be the way I would like to run this, if we could. With that, if that's okay, we'll open it up now for discussion. Anybody want to jump in?
Sure, I, I would happily go first, Jeff. I don't have a lot to add on this one. My position is still the same as it was last time, which is, I still think the best answer for us and for the town, and for everyone involved, is to open this up like we would any other position, and provide everyone an opportunity to apply, evaluate, and move from there.
Okay. We're going to deal with the board first, okay?
I'll go second. My position hasn't changed either. I think there's a time to do a nationwide search, and there's a time to hire from within. I think we have a strong candidate with many years' town experience, who can more than, more than fill the role.
We have to be careful, I'm sorry, Chris. We have to be really general on discussing. We can't deal with a specific individual.
Internal hire, hiring process versus external hiring process.
Yeah, I think an internal, I think an internal hiring process is the right solution for this particular position. I see no reason to pursue anybody on a, on a larger search.
Thank you.
My upper is Peter going.
Peter?
Whoever, it doesn't matter, I can go.
Go ahead.
My feeling is the same feeling I felt at the last meeting we discussed this. No reason to look outside externally, when we have qualified people on, on the force that could take that position. And it's a camaraderie thing, and myself being in uniform for twenty-four years with the military and Department of Corrections, it's, and that's what you strive for when you join a uniform, to be promoted from within, and to be trained, and the town's paid a lot for training, and that's my feeling on that.
All right, thank you. You're up.
My turn, okay. So I read this letter that Nate put together for us, outlining everything, and the pros and cons for both, whether it be external or internal, and his position and recommendations, and things like that. And where I understand both sides, whether it be a internal posting or external posting, I still feel that we should go externally due to the fact that the chief is such an important position in town, and to only go within the internal. And I used this analogy when we were speaking about this, about this letter, was it's the same for like the town administrator and the chief of the fire. It's, there's, there are very few positions in town that hold so much responsibility that it just, to make sure that all the checks have been hit, and also to make sure that the person that is put in place has the confidence of the whole town behind them, and can't be questioned in that position, because they've met the criteria that they should. And there's no going back on to, you know, well, they got this because, you know. There, there is no questioning why they got that position. They deserve that position, and they are put in the position because they deserve it. So I still feel that our Police Department is rather small to post only internally, and this makes sure that the person that is put in place is put there, and deserves to be there, and has the whole town behind them.
Okay. Nate?
I would like to reiterate, just for the good of the order, what I did say in my letter, that choosing an internal hire does not handcuff you to hiring internally.
Yep.
If you post internally, and one, two, three, or four people put in for it, you can interview them, and if, as a board, those professionals do not meet your wants and/or needs, you can then choose to go in another direction, vice versa.
you can then choose to go in another direction, vice versa.
And you said, yes, you said the same exact thing for the external. Just because you posted externally does not mean that you are necessarily hiring somebody that is external.
Yeah.
They could be, you know, somebody that is wi, from within a hundred percent. So it's to determine the best fit.
Absolutely.
Okay. Uh, before I give my opinion, uh, I think you had your hand up, Paul. Go ahead.
Well, I wanna know what's, which way everything goes in the hiring process of the town. Is it just the police department and the fire department that's gonna be scrutinized this way? I thought it was all the positions that would be put out there and picked proper candidate, or the right candidate. I don't see that happening. Therefore, I think until we make that a certain thing, then in the instance of a, a police chief, right now, um, not mistaken, Ryan's been with us for sixteen years. He's also got specialized training that we've paid for.
I'm sorry, we gotta stop. We can't discuss an individual.
Okay.
Where I appreciate your, the other part of it, okay?
For this individual, we've paid for training.
Yeah.
To move up the ladder. Okay? Chief Perrin left when? And we're just getting around to discussing this? If this was necessary and his name should have been thrown in the hat with external members, it should have been started. I also heard that we were gonna hire, we could possibly hire some company to do an independent search. Is that correct?
Well, that's what we did, that's what we did for the TA. It's correct. It could be done, but we, as a board, have already determined not to do that.
Okay. Because I was gonna say.
We definitely do not wanna do that. Okay?
And I would appreciate, I know I'm new, I'd appreciate you coming by and telling me where you think the disparities are in the hiring processes, because at, if there were any in the past, there are not going to be any in the future. And I'm willing to commit to that here this evening.
But is that the process? We're supposed to put out search for, for people? No?
No, not necessarily.
Because you just mentioned the fire department being an important chief.
I did, yes.
The, yes. And a police chief.
For the chiefs.
Town clerk isn't?
It's the, the town, certain things, there, our town policy is to hire within, okay? I personally am going to tell you my feelings and thoughts. That's my purpose of being sitting here. And the, my per, my thoughts are there's certain positions in this town that are, hold so much power and s, have to be very scrutinized and have to do certain things that to hire within, it's like Nate's. We didn't just shove somebody like higher within, shove somebody up in his place because of the.
Wasn't anybody qualified within?
I'm not saying, how do you, you'd be surprised. There's people qualified to do it.
Did it already working for the town?
We don't know.
Did it working for the town? Any one of these offices on the crossway?
Yes. Sandy did it. She could have applied. She chose not to, but she could have done it.
So the difference in that situation is we didn't have an internal candidate.
Okay.
We didn't do it that way. We automatically went outside.
Also, just as a point of order for the people watching at home, if anyone in the gallery chooses to speak, if you could please say your name and address. Thank you.
Okay, before I jump in.
Santa.
Yes, Santa. I did. Did you, did you hear your ears burning earlier? I was talking about you.
No.
You're all set, Paul? Thank you.
Pretty much, yeah.
Okay, all right. Anyone else? All right, then, it's my turn. Um, I want to explain how I arrived at my decision. I made some notes because I have lived with this for the last two weeks. Can honestly say every single day, I have been talking to myself in the car, which way, this way, that way, and so forth. I, I can assure you all that I have done my homework, both internally and externally. Internally, I mean, up here. Because first of all, the way I approached this is, and I've made this public before, when I ran, uh, for the select one, one of my personal beliefs and has, I've held to it for the last ten years and I still do, is I do believe in, uh, people being rewarded for their loyalty, their experience, their training and so forth from within. I think it's important that we do this. Um, but this is me personally. That was one side of me that was arguing, because that's how I feel personally. The other side of the time of the argument, I was thinking of, well, I wonder what, with the people who elected me to be here, what they wanted. So I'm trying to decide which way to go, and that caused me to, uh, reach out. I've had people, uh, reach out to me, both in, and, uh, I have all the paperwork here and emails, et cetera, texts. I personally have reached out to townspeople who have no skin in the game, and, and they're on both sides of this. Some favor the, uh, search committee, some favor internal. I've, I've spoken to two retired police chiefs to get their opinions. Um, and to what Paul was already saying, which is also, I have, it's in our town charter that we go this way and can go this way as far as internally, in terms of how we are going to, uh, appoint people and so forth and hire them. Consequently, during all of this, uh, it came down to how would, another thing that was important to me was how does this affect the morale of not just the police department, but of all the other departments in town? If we ignored what we ourselves professed in our charter, in our bylaws, the chance for advancement in their respective departments for qualified individuals. This is, in my opinion, the perfect and proper opportunity for us to do sort of putting our money where our mouths are. Consequently, I favor posting the chief of police job internally. That being the case, if there's no further discussion, we can, uh, either Chris or Peter, if you would take a, make a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Go ahead.
I would like, I would like.
You're breaking up. We're not hearing you. If not Pete, if not Chris can make the motion, because you both are on the same side of that.
Can you guys hear me?
No, we can't.
And now, yep.
Okay. Yeah, it said it was unstable, so. Uh, let me start again. I would like to make a motion to post the, uh, position for police chief in the town of Hubbardson internally.
Okay, motion's made.
Second.
And second. Further discussion on the motion? Katie, Heather? Okay, seeing none? All in favor of the motion?
Yes.
Yes? Opposed?
Aye.
Two, three in favor, two opposed. The motion is carried. Thank you very much. Thank you. Okay, next, we're moving to the upper. And on this, for the sake of the board, because Nathan and I were talking about this earlier today and along with Sandy, and nothing's changed.
I did send an email this afternoon stating that I was going to respectfully ask you, Mister Chair, for more time, seeing as there are a number of variables that we do not have the answer to. If you would like a deeper dive on that, I did send a good amount of info to your email about, probably an hour and a half ago. I apologize about the late nature of said email, but essentially, some of the variables keeping us from understanding exactly how much we have left to spend are how much of the real estate takings money is still available and how long we have to hold it. And the property on Gardner Road and the future of its feasibility and if we were going to move forward with considering that as an option for a possible public safety building. So with those two kind of variables still up in the air, I am speaking with the, uh, KP's ARPA legal counsel tomorrow. He has a few questions for us, so I do not believe tomorrow will be the final conversation. At the end of the day, we do have to look into a, into why we previously put some, some legal bills regarding the takings into the ARPA taking, into the ARPA real estate taking account, because I think that's what muddied the waters here. But I was not here at that time, so it will take some, some deeper digging in order to be able to come to a realization on what had happened and what the impact of that's gonna be. So if the board could give us a, I would like to have a update at our January tenth meeting. Cannot promise that, but we're gonna do our, do our best.
No, I would be in favor of that, uh, again, based on our discussion earlier today also because Sandy indicated, among other things, these unclaimed checks.
Yeah.
And I asked her, because we've talked to her on the phone, because she's on, under the COVID quarantine also. I asked her just in passing, I said, are, are these the minority or the majority of checks that haven't been claimed? She said it's the majority.
Yes.
So we're talking about a significant amount of money that, uh, God forbid, uh, this problem would extend itself be, to the point that not only would we not have these checks picked up or that money, et cetera, but it would go back to the state and all of a sudden, we're in a position of, whoops, we need this money.
Yeah.
So, uh, I personally agree with you. This is not gonna help you, Ed, because we can't deal with ARPA tonight just for those very reasons. We're not certain ourselves what we have for money, because people, uh, on the land taking, et cetera, for the project downtown, they've all been sent certified things, et cetera, and they're not coming in to get their checks and fill out the paperwork.
And they're not waiving it either. So it's like, it's limbo.
We're kind of in a state of limbo, so.
And because of estate-taking law and that kind of procedure, you have to hold on to that amount of money for longer than you would, like, another, something else.
Yeah, you can't just.
Yeah, you can't just get rid of it.
Negate that money and be, be, be applying.
And we're unsure at this time if we're, if we have to hold it for, say, twenty years, if that's even gonna be eligible to be part of ARPA because of the reporting requirement. And that's what we're looking into right now, kind of seeing where, where the buck stops. Because there are some of these people that, because Mast Dot came and told us that they were under the assumption that we would have to keep the money available for them if they were to want it in perpetuity, like indefinitely. So that's something we're looking into and we'll cross that bridge when we get to it, but no one wanted to give a definitive answer.
How long are the checks going for?
The, the checks that have been cut are.
Oh, are they six-month checks or?
Yeah, they're already.
They're already gone. Yeah, they're expired, so we have to, yeah, we have to make new ones, but.
They're already passed, yeah.
They're already past six months. So if we sent, uh, if we sent them a letter that, uh, that they, they have not come in for their funding and give them a, a, a reasonable closure date.
What, we have to be in the parameters of the law, on that, on that re, on that variable.
Right, we don't, we don't know what that date is. We can just say that date. We have to hold that by.
And the land has been taken by eminent domain, and the project is going forward in the spring, you know, the downtown project.
Yeah, they've already been doing all kinds of work.
Right, it's a fait accompli, so they mean.
Are, are, are those the only checks that are, hadn't been picked up?
The majority of them.
Yeah, but it's the majority of the, of the group.
Yeah, the majority of them.
They have to come in to, to fill out paperwork
Yeah.
and sign whatever to get their check. So I mean, it's not a question of you mail them the check.
What was your, what's your dollar, what's your dollar amount of those checks that, uh, haven't been picked up?
I don't know if we have it total, because we're trying to figure out how much money we, we had.
Sixty thou, something thousand dollars, I think.
S, significant.
Which is a huge chunk, because we're short.
Don't quote me on that, because I don't have the number in front of me, but that would be, I'd say fifty to sixty percent.
No, that's the best of it, that's right.
And then the, the other floating question is that fe, uh, feasibility study, if that is going to go forward or not, because if it doesn't, then that means a huge chunk comes back into the ARPA funds as well.
Feasibility study for?
For, um, whether or not, um, AAA today would be a good, suitable, what we'd have to do to turn it into, yes, yeah.
Oh, to rehab that for a, uh.
Public, public safety.
A public safety contract.
And I am going to be reaching out to the owner of that property to discuss, now that the appraisal has come back. Because now that the appraisal is back, we have to know if, because as a government, we can't go above the appraisal price. So we have to know if that's something that the property owner would even conceivably be open to.
Right. If you need, uh, if you need help in contacting him, he's in Iceland now.
Okay.
So you're not gonna get him locally.
Right, we knew, we knew that he was there.
Okay.
Yeah.
Probably gonna help you contact him.
Because at one point, we weren't even certain if we were at now on this. We were there because he was unavailable, but we were able to reach out and get ahold of him. So. So your miracle can't happen right now.
Not, not yet.
Not yet, yeah.
It's gonna, it's gonna be a, a Groundhog Day miracle.
So that was January tenth, you wanted to do that?
At this time.
Okay. Is that okay with the members of the board if we put this off to January tenth?
Yes.
Heather, this is your group. Is this okay?
She's thumbs upping.
Okay.
Oh. Oh, I think, I see you, oh, okay. Then we don't, we don't need a motion for that. Okay. Moving on then. Acceptance of the revised FY twenty-four financial budget planning calendar. All Nate needs from us is a motion to accept the revised calendar that he provided for us.
And none of the end dates have changed. It just kind of made it more so that I, it was attainable for me coming in to be able to get all the ducks in a row. It probably still won't be the best budget year that I ever have, but I think that in accordance with this calendar, I'll be able to do the necessary requirements to get us to town meeting with a budget in hand.
All right. I'd like to make a motion to accept the revised fiscal year twenty twenty-four budget plan calendar.
Motion made, second. Any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yes? Opposed? I guess, I think, I didn't hear you. Did you go?
Aye.
Okay. Motion's passed. Thank you. Okay, we'll move to, uh, the TA report.
All right. Thank you, Mister Chair. Uh, as I wrote and released this to the good people of Hubbardson over the last few days, so I will just kind of hit the bullet points of it here tonight. Over the last two weeks, I did a lot of work with the planning board and economic development and the, and the MRPC. I had a variety of meetings with the MRPC, looking at what we can do, how we can work better together, and what some of these dates are. There will be kind of moving parts to a majority of our questionable projects that we have questions on within the next couple of weeks, i.e. the master plan, the green communities, and all of the things like that. There's the regional transportation plan and MVP, the town overlay district, the zoning bylaws, the energy, the battery best, that will have a little bit of movement in the next couple of weeks, too. I look forward to working with all of the pertinent parties on that into the future. I will be in attendance at the Economic Development Committee meeting tomorrow evening. I have a call in to the chair. She called me yesterday, but I was in interviews all today, kind of moving on to that. I, over the next two weeks, I'm gonna shift my attention to speaking with a lot of the chairs of the boards and committees. I sent out an email to all of the chairs asking them if they wanted to schedule a sit-down or if they wanted me to just, to attend their January meeting. People have had different opinions on that, and I will work with them in the way that they wanna work with me. On the budget, we had our first meeting with the CITC, and we took down the questions of the group, and I have brought those questions forward to the different department heads, made the requests for certain people to attend the next meeting in the first week of December. So that will be moving in, also in the first week, in the first week of January, sorry. First week of January, the finance team will also be having our kickoff meeting. I hope to use the finance team. I hope to use the finance team in a way that it hasn't been used in previous years. We have a good number of experienced finance professionals, so I'm hoping to really be able to use their knowledge and experience to help us put out the best budget feasible. I'm also going to be inviting the finance committee chairperson on to be a liaison on that just so that she is in from the get go. On a human resources and volunteer recruitment standpoint, we interviewed for the land use clerk position today. We had three wonderful interviews and I believe we'll be coming up with a proposed candidate tomorrow at some point. There are a couple of questions that myself, Tony and Kathy Hansgate had, but we're going to be meeting back up tomorrow to talk about that. We are also looking for a part-time assistant librarian that was just posted, but the incumbent, I believe, just left or is leaving at the end of this week. Communications, I've begun working on my communications plan that I have been talking about for a little while. A central part of that is to bring everybody together, so I plan on having a proposal in that plan to create a communications task force so that we're not kind of recreating the wheel in having different communications initiatives come out at different points from different entities and we can all just be the town of Hubbardston. Obviously, there will still be individual accounts for the different individual entities, but a branding and being able to market is very important to the message that you're sending. And I think bringing us up to the, up to a modern day communications policy will be a great improvement on what is already a strength of our community. I met with Brittany this past week and let her know that we did find the YouTube incident one hundred percent unacceptable. We're willing to move forward with that and I spoke to her on different ways we could work together. One of those ways is she, and this is a budget and planning initiative, we need to get as many entities or groups to meet here. Cause if you meet in here, it goes right into their server and and it's done. If you meet somewhere else, there are costly editing and uploading hours. So I know last year that line item went a little bit over and we had to move some funds. So I'm hoping that this year we can alleviate some of that by getting the different boards and committees to come over here instead of meeting in other places. That may require us to do some shifting of keys, but that's something I'm going to look into for a future meeting or if we already have a key holding policy, I'm gonna look into it.
Nate, by here, do you mean here literally this room or also there?
Here.
This one.
This room.
We've been able to take.
But that's what he's talking about with the extra cost, because now somebody's gonna come in.
Oh, me, for that other room, that would be an extra, I was saying, other places, yeah.
Yes, and the same, and the same. Yeah.
But, oh, so it's definitely just this room.
Yeah.
This is the preferred room.
Yep.
We obviously can tape outside of here, but this is preferably where we would like boards, committees and entities to meet.
Sure.
I will be working with her on a short YouTube program, first introducing myself and the new faces around town. And after that, we will turn it into a monthly program meeting with people like you and maybe doing a explanation of the town meeting process and things like that. We're really open to ideas and I know it's a, it's a new concept, so it can grow, but that's something she and the cable commission are willing to do, so I figured that would be good. There are a lot of people out there that may have time to watch a two, three minute YouTube video that don't have time to read a comprehensive document. All right, personnel recognition, I wanted to take a moment to recognize town clerk Kristen Foster. She's been taking a lot of additional trainings and really grabbing the bull by the horns with her new role. So it was wonderful to see her, I wasn't here when she first got here, but come in right at a state election, work with her trainer now and begin just doing the other things. She's getting the census out in the next couple of days, she's just waiting on a printout from, I believe, the fire department to get that going. Uh, the select board and myself and various other employees took last Monday to give a thank you to the various volunteers that serve on our boards, commissions and nonprofits. Uh, State Representative Donnie Berthium's office stopped by and gave certificates to a number of the volunteers. It was a great event overall, the town could not do what we do without the volunteers. They are the heart of our community and it was just a small way to show them that we appreciate what they do. Like to thank Tony, Tony Walker, Bobby Tebow, Sandy Nathan and select board member Katie Young for putting together that party and making the food. It was a great time was had by all and it's something we're definitely going to look forward to doing in the future. The Hubbardston Department of Public Works did a bang up job at their, during their first winter event this year. They also released their twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three public winter guidance for those of you watching that want to go and read that, it's a riveting read. So and with that, I will end by saying the town hall will have holiday hours, of course. We will be closing at noon on Thursday, December twenty second and Thursday, December twenty ninth for Christmas and New Year's holidays. In addition to being closed Friday, December twenty third and Monday, December twenty sixth in observ- in observance of Christmas, Monday, January second in observance of New Years and Monday, January sixteenth in observance of Martin Luther King Junior Day. If there are any questions or anything like that, feel free to reach out to my office or anybody that works here or the select board at any time. Thank you very much and happy holidays.
I'd like to add just one thank you there publicly, I wanna thank Donnie Berthium and our daughter and his office. I personally set it up with Donnie and I know he wanted to be here and we were expecting him and he got stuck at the doctor's office, so that it was not planned that he wasn't going to be there to do the certificates, because after I talked to him to have this done, he was all for it. He made the comment and I felt, made me feel good about it. Apparently, we are the only community in his dis- his, he represents that does this for the volunteers and that's nice to know. So he did, he had every intention of being here, cause he thought it was a good thing. So publicly, again, from my point of view, thank you to Donnie and to Donna.
Yeah, the certificates were really nice, they were, they were really nice, yeah.
Yeah, oh, beautiful, yeah. Did you ever get yours?
Yeah, I did, I do.
You left early, okay.
Yeah, appreciate it.
Nathan, did you send that to us electronically, which we just?
I did, yeah, and it's on the website.
He did. Okay.
Yeah.
All right, policies to review, I don't believe we have any, okay. Matt is not reasonably anticipated by the chair, is there anything to be brought up?
Yeah, I have something. So some of my constituents have come to me to talk about the dissolving of the Keep Hubbardston Beautiful Committee. A local charitable organization tried to make a donation to fund that or something like that, and I'm speaking secondhand, so bear with me. And the organization was told that they, their money wasn't needed and there was plenty of money to fund something like that. Um, so my question is, how would something like that get funded? From what account does that come from? Who manages that account and what's the balance in that account?
So that was absorbed by me and as of right now, I have not spent anything and I have everything rigged up.
I don't, I don't understand what absorbed by you means, is it a town account?
Um, Laura, it lo- no, 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 no money, zero monies. There was no monies in any account, there was no account for it. Originally.
So how is it going to get funded?
Because I don't need funding for it, but it's under special events, so.
If it gets done. So what is special events?
I'm sorry, what?
What is special events?
Special events was put together back in two thousand and seventeen, oh, actually, it was what was left from the two fiftieth committee.
Special events is 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 what, I mean, what is it, is it a?
What I've been doing for years now, all the the Hubbardston light fight, the brunch with Santa.
How does money get into that account?
I sell the banners for a hundred and.
How does money get out of that account?
I have to hand in receipts and I have to, just like any other account, if there's money raised, the money has to be put in and I bring it to the offices and it all has to go through the town offices because I am one person, so therefore the offices and Nathan is the oversight of me. And the same thing with any monies I've spent.
So what's the balance in that account?
Right now, off the top of my head, I have managed to fundraise like twenty thousand dollars.
So what is, what can we use that account for?
Anything for my special events, it has to be for the special events. So anything that I have to pay for or I choose to pay for for any of the events that's on my tab, if you go to the town website under special events, I have a whole tab and that's what I use the money for, any fundraising efforts.
So this is a private account?
No, it's a town, it's a, it can only be used for fundrais- uh, for um special events. It's, there's no tax money that goes into it, I do not get any money for any kind of taxes or anything like that. All the money has to have the same checks and balances as any other line item account in the towns. Um, so I have to bring in a receipt in order to be either reimbursed or I have to ask the town to purchase it through that account if it's something. So um like if I have to get porta potties for the the Hubbardston fair or um the prizes that I give away, I have to physically either bring in a receipt or request that they be bought.
So it's not an enterprise account, but it's very similar to that in sort of a nonprofit sort of way. Like whereas no tax money is raised or or spent, the special events group, which is Katie now, but may not always be, other people can get involved in different things as they see fit, do turn that over. I can get a public update on what exactly is in that account, but there are no taxes or anything like that spent on those, on those events.
And the way it initially came about too, in terms of the dissolution of the original group Laura Foley, she was, she had set it up to begin with, but she basically was asking to let it be, able to let it go and we as a board actually dissolved it.
Yeah.
And Katie volunteered to continue the, the idea.
So there's no, yeah, so anything that comes from that account, like so for like non such and I, I have to pay for the rights for the movie, I have to pay for, you know, stuff like that.
And who authorizes the expenditures, you exclusively?
No, I have to go through the offices.
So it's you and then you see?
Yeah.
And I have yet to see that yet.
Yeah, so I usually, yeah, cause we haven't bought anything that's big since he's come in.
We haven't bought or. So you bring in the expense and you sign off on it?
Yeah. And if it's over a certain dollar amount, then it's gotta come back pretty much to the select board. If it's like, like say I were to wanna do fireworks or something like that, that's like a massive dollar amount, so that's gonna come back to the select board. Um, the TA can only authorize so much.
It is.
Um, it's written in the thing, I, I think it's like five or ten thousand dollars, it can't be anything more than that.
Cause ten thousand is public procurement, is the public procurement threshold, I'd imagine that it may be similar.
Yeah.
We would not spend that type of money without it being acknowledged.
We have to get out of ten thousand, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, 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 cause after that, you need to do a request for.
Yeah, regardless.
It is.
Yeah.
Proposal on certain projects anyway.
Yeah.
I'm also, I have not been here during a time where we did anything of this, so I do not know what the process would be, but I am going to learn the process and work on the process. Uh, we can bring this up at another meeting if you want to know an update on a written processes on what it would, what it does look like or how much is in the account. I would have no problem telling you about that on another time or publicly at a meeting.
Okay, good, yes.
That's state law.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, it's all open, yeah, all this is in our, just like any of the other line items in our accounts. We have to, you know, everything has to be out in the open, there can be nothing hidden, everything has to have a receipt to be documented for all that stuff. So that's why I can't just come in and be like, oh, I spent X dollar amount for this and they just hand me money, it doesn't work that way.
I don't know if you heard, but Chris said he would like to have that.
Yes, yep.
And we'll write that up.
At a public meeting and that's fine with me.
Yeah, so for right now, for um the um Keep Hubbardston Beautiful, um, when Laura did ask me, we talked, um, we had breakfast actually at the diner. Um, and she, we talked about, she didn't have the support to take it over, uh, to keep it going and everything else and asked if I would just take it. And then um we talked about that, the Lions had offered to donate a thousand dollars, she told me that. And I did talk to Clapton at the DBW when I was down there putting stuff um away. And he had said, we had talked about it, I said, say, you know, I said, I have money in the fund, I don't, you know, don't need it. I said, and I told him, I said, that you guys are probably gonna have people that are gonna need oil and food and he totally agreed, he was on the same page and no money had changed hands or had been donated at that point anyway, so it, it was kind of, he's, he said, yeah, this is kind of a moot point at this, at this phase of the game, so. Um, but yeah, so that's basically, but yeah, special events has been going on for.
Since the two fifty.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I was pretty much the last person.
It was formed for that, right.
Standing, yeah, me, myself and Karen, but we just kind of.
So does that make sense to, you mentioned, when monies are taken out of this account, put into this account? In, you know, a full disclosure type situation, transparency type situation?
And that's the process that I'm going to dig into and write up for you.
Okay.
Just so that we're all on the same page in terms of.
There's money put in and taken out of accounts on all different, like there's all kinds of different accounts in town that have fundraising accounts, like the senior center has fundraising accounts, there's a lot of fundraising accounts that are in the town, none of them, like I don't understand what you mean by full disclosure.
Well, I think we should, I think we should have transparency on that, for every, for everything that's.
Yeah.
And I can't speak to past practice.
If it's a public account, you're telling me this isn't a public account?
It's a town managed account that's used, it's set up to be used for special events.
There's no public money.
But there's no public money.
No public money, it's all fundraised money.
There's no public money at all, so, so it's not technically a public account.
As a means of transparency, I can't speak to past practice, but I would expect the special events committee to do a portion in the annual report outlining what they did,
Yeah, I do.
what they spent, and that may be something that they, that they've done in the past.
Right, yeah. It's not a committee, it's an, I'm an advisor.
Oh, yes.
It's no committee, it's a branch, yeah.
I would expect the special events advisor to do a portion of the annual report so that people know when they're finding out the same time as what the town spent, how much different employees are making, what's going on. That is a time where it would be appropriate. If there are other times where it's requested, by all means, we can, we can let, whether it be a select board member or a general member of the population, a resident, we can, we can let them know at any time.
Okay, good.
Ed?
If it's a, if it's a town account, then it comes under the ability for when we have an audit done, then this account could be audited just like any other account.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay. All right then, so we'll, we'll put it on a future meeting, uh, okay. That's what you want, right, Chris?
Yeah, please.
So we'll do that, all right. Um, moving on, public press questions, et cetera, if there's no one here for that. So um we are going to be moving into executive session at this particular point in time and before the motion is made, um, we will have to adjourn from here to move into executive session, but then we'll have to return from executive session back to open session, just to adjourn to go home.
Yeah.
All right, so that's the order of that we'll be doing this.
Thank you, may the holidays be special.
Same to you.
Thanks, yeah, thank you very much. Merry Christmas.
You wanna make the motion or read it?
Okay. Yeah, so I'd like to make a motion to move into executive session. G, excuse me, MGLC three zero A, um, section twenty one A three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have detrimental effect on a bargaining or litigating uh, position of the public body. Review minutes of December sixth, twenty twenty two involving Tom Doust, Graylock Confidential. And to come back into a regular session to adjourn after.
All right, motion's made. Is that a second?
There's somebody on here still.
Yes, I'm, I'm gonna, the minute the motion is made in vote. Yes, I'm, I'm gonna, uh, the minute the motion is made and voted it, voted on, I am going to tell Mr. Cormiero, fourteen Natty Pond Drive, that I will be removing him if he does not remove himself. I apologize for that, Mr. Cormiero. Oh, he, he removed himself.
So, did you second that, Heather?
I can second.
Okay, uh, this is a voice vote, everybody, so, um, uh, motion's made in second, so, uh, Peter, you still there?
Yes.
Start with you.
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Jeff, yes. We are now adj-